Good evening. Welcome to the September 29th, 2025 Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, we're honored to have Reverend Susie Herholtzer from Big Beaver United Methodist Church provide us with our invocation. So please rise if you are able and then remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much. Would you join me in a spirit of prayer? Eternal Spirit of wisdom and compassion, we gather this evening as neighbors, colleagues, and community members, each bringing with us our different traditions, beliefs, and stories. We give thanks for the rich diversity of our city, people of many cultures, faiths, and backgrounds who together form the fabric of our common life. Grant us wisdom for the decisions that are before us. Help us to listen with respect, to speak with integrity, and to act with justice for the good of all people. Guide us to seek not only what benefits some, but what strengthens this whole community. We remember this evening the people of Grand Blank, and we pray for healing for the people of their community. May they find the strength to continue moving forward in the wake of unimaginable tragedy. May the work we do here tonight honor the dignity of every person, protect the vulnerable, and build peace among the people of Troy. And may this council lead with courage, humility, and hope so that our city will continue to be a place of welcome, opportunity, and shared flourishing. With gratitude for the opportunity to serve, let us work together with grace and respect. Amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord to the flag of the United States of America and to the glory of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Susie. Appreciate that very much. I'll call the September 29th, 2025 Troy City Council Meeting to order and ask for the roll call for Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kringda.
Here.
Councilmember Chanda.
Here.
Mayor Potam Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
All present this evening. We have no certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have no carryover items, so we move on to public hearings. E1, we do have one public hearing this evening. E1 is the termination of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Five, Pavilions of Troy, parcel number 88-20-19-476-002, and number 88-20-19-476-003, 3100 West Big Beaver Road, and adoption of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number 12, an associated reimbursement agreement for Forbes Frankel Troy Ventures LLC, parcel number 88-20-19-476-004, and number 88-20-19-476-005, 3050, and 3062 West Big Beaver Road. And that will be introduced by our Economic Development Manager, Mark Adams.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I have the pleasure of introducing Somerset West Brownfield Plan for your consideration. For our newer council members, I want to briefly talk about what Act 381 is, the Brownfield. It's an incentive program that the state of Michigan came up with to assist developers with environmentally challenged properties, blighted properties, and obsolescence. It's a great tool to use for developers to take on the challenges of those types of properties. This particular plan has certain costs that are reimbursable, and it comes to about $9 We also have an extension to this particular plan that when once the $9 million is completely paid off to the developer, we are going to capture about two years of additional taxes to go into our revolving loan fund, which would allow us to assist with other challenging projects that developers may have and maybe help them with some upfront costs. The $9 million that's reimbursable are for certain eligible expenses, and that money is only paid back through the incremental increases in the value of the property, which makes this sort of a win-win situation for the developer and the community. What I would like to do is go to the termination of Brownfield Plan Five, which was the Pavilion of Troy in 2008. I'm going to sort of defer to our city attorney, Lori, because I think that has to take place before we can have the presentation of Somerset West.
Mayor, actually, you can address them all. It does have to, the action does have to be approved before you can move on with a resolution for adopting or approving a new plan, but you can take both of these items at the same time.
Okay. Great. Just wanted to make sure we are following procedure properly. But with that, what I would like to do is bring the developer up, and he has a few slides that he wants to present, and answer any questions that you have.
Welcome back, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you. Good to see everybody. I think, Mark, you might have been the only one that missed. Were you here at the last presentation?
No.
No, so. I am not going to go through everything. We did it at exhaustion. First of all, really only have one message to everybody here, and that is really thanking everybody for your incredible support, your insight, your forward-thinking ability to understand that we took a major risk in working kind of out of the ordinary by demolishing a 20-year vacant obsolescence building to get to this point in time today. And as was pointed out earlier, we only recapture part of the increment over a period of time if the project gets built out in accordance with our plan. You guys are watching everything unfold in real time, in live time. Things continue to move. They are only going to get better. We have a great corporate citizen and great corporate partner in the University of Michigan. The project's going to continue to expand with other uses around it. We are very excited for the future. We spent two years with the Planning Commission, the City Council, the Brownfield Authority, and so many other administrative people within the city. So thank you for your support. Thank you for understanding what this is going to mean to the city, and I think it's going to be even greater than all of us believe in having a corporate citizen to the breadth and the extension that the University of Michigan will bring to the Big Beaver Corridor. So thank you for that. I'm not going to go through a big presentation. You guys have all seen this, 950,000 square foot Kmart former headquarters. It's been vacant since 2006, so we're coming up on 20 years. And obviously, all the expenses that are in the Brownfield reimbursement plan really go to the demolition and remediation, both within the building and the soil subsurface remediation of this project, which was a major, major undertaking. Those of you that followed it, I think we were eight to nine months to complete that entire project, with a few of the scopes tailing a little bit longer, such as the underground water and remediation of certain subsurface materials. And then, you've seen this again before, I'm going to be really brief, is just that connectivity and that connective tissue that we want to maintain through the city of Troy. And we always call this the central fabric of our entire development, which focuses on green space, open space, public space. You've seen the slides, what percent of this overall development is open to green space and public space, and we are still focused to this day on making that come true. You see that begin to take shape here in the form of landscaping, hardscape areas that will connect these different development front doors together and allow pedestrians to use the Big Beaver Corridor in a way that they haven't before. We are deepening that green belt, and we will energize that green belt in a way that connects pedestrians to allow them to use that as a way to cross between different uses on the Big Beaver Corridor if they choose. This is the rendering that you see. I can only tell you that it will be better than this. Have faith. We will be back in front of you very soon, hopefully with additional development plans, and they are coming fast and furious. Again, thank you for your support, your insight, and your courage and your judgment in supporting our vision for this project. I want to talk, call on Richard Barr, who's going to just very briefly touch on the Brownfield reimbursement plan, so thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Council, appreciate your time tonight. My name is Richard Barr from the Honigland Farm. I just want to give you a one-page overview of what's in the Brownfield Plan. The entire plan and the reimbursement agreement should be in your board packet. The highlights are that the current taxable value of the property is about $7.2 million. We are projecting that, based on the future investment, that that will increase to about $125 million. My math isn't so good as to whether that's a 50, or 30 times and 20 times increase, but a huge increase, probably the biggest increase I've ever seen proportionally in a Brownfield Plan. The reimbursable costs, as Nate suggested, are about $9.2 million, and because of the amount of investment compared to the cost being reimbursed, it's projected that it'll be reimbursed between, starting in 2027, and being completed in 2031 or 2032. I've worked on Brownfield Plans since the plans came into law, 29 years ago, and this is the quickest payoff I've ever had on a Brownfield Plan anywhere in the state of Michigan. In addition to those payments, as Mr. Adams mentioned, there is a large local revolving fund that will be established after that, covering approximately three years, depending on the flow of funds, approximately $7.8 million, plus or minus, and that will be available to the city and the Brownfield Authority to use in its discretion pursuant to the provisions of Act 381. There are a lot of uses. I could probably talk an hour tonight about the things you could do with that money someday. If you have any questions now or in the future, let me know, but it's a great toolbox and a great fund that you'll be able to have that's locally controlled, completely locally controlled, as long as you satisfy the requirements of the law. That should all be completed then by 2034, so before you know it, hopefully the buildings are done, the payments are done, the revolving fund is funded, and to not be cute about it, you're trying to find a good way to spend that money at that point. So it is the best concept of a revolving project that is going from, as Nate said, a building that was empty for more than 20 years to a revenue generator for the future of the city. If you have any other specific questions, I'm happy to answer them in as much detail as you'd like, or I could be just as happy to sit down if you have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. See, Councilmember Brooks has a question?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. So just to clarify, this revolving fund, you said it's about $7.8 million over the span of three years. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so who exactly gets to control how the funds are spent? The city or is it conjunction with you? I guess I would want to know how that works.
The money comes in, under the Brownfield Law, Act 381, the money comes in through the tax collections, and once the reimbursements are completed in approximately 2031, the treasure is directed to have the remaining money go to the Brownfield Authority. So it becomes property of the Brownfield Authority that can be used with any other assets it has. Most Brownfield Authorities don't have any other money, so it goes into their bank account. And as it comes in, or if it wants to, it can wait for a while, it's able to spend it on any legal use of money under the Brownfield Law. Mostly that is used, and this is not done a lot, and usually it's at the end of a Brownfield Plan, which is usually 10 or 20 years. So most people, 10 or 20 years from now, don't remember why it was set up. They weren't around. They weren't on council. Some of you probably still will be. And so at that point, or along the way, if you plan ahead, you can designate future projects. You might find contaminated properties you want to help give some seed money to, loan money, grant money. You might have some demolition projects you want to fund, loan, grant, the like. There might be future city projects that would qualify to have Brownfield Funds used for them, demolition of buildings, for example. So it becomes a source for money used in the discretion of the Brownfield Authority, and I would assume, given the community as it is, it would be in collaboration with the administration and with the city council.
Did you have something, Mark, you wanted to add?
Richard gave the long answer. The short answer is the Brownfield Authority and city administration and city council that makes the determination on how those funds are going to be used. And sometimes developers will come up and they need upfront money because the payback on the Brownfield is going to take longer than what they have funds for. And so with additional $7 million, we can use that to assist with projects that we deem viable for the city of Troy, and that loan can be paid back the same way that you pay back reimbursable costs through the incremental increase in value of the property. So I think we have between $700,000 and $800,000 in our revolving loan fund right now. And I was remiss not to thank Lori for all of her hard work with this project. Also, Kelly, Dylan, and Chris, it really was a team effort.
Additional questions from Mr. Barr, from Mr. Forbes, or Councilmember Chanda?
Thank you, Mr. Bell. So I just wanted to clarify, you mentioned the taxable property value is 125 million, roughly, that's projected. That's not including the Michigan medicine, right? That's the portion that Mr. Forbes is going to develop. Is that correct?
Correct. The Michigan medicine will be tax exempt, so this would be the private taxable part of the development that's projected to have that value, based upon cost. And discussions we've had with the assessor about estimated valuations based on buildings to be built in the future, all an estimate, of course, but we try pretty hard to be as accurate as we can be.
And it's expected to generate revenue from 2027? Okay, so because we didn't really talk about that timeline in the, or you know, like the phase two and phase three, we didn't really talk about the timeline, but I'm happy to see that it's going to be starting soon, so I'm welcome to do that, but okay, that was my question, like it's, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Chanda. Councilmember Bert Chamberlain.
Thank you. So a follow-up question, I think I know the answer, but just to ask it. So if the baseline, that base taxable value is 7.2 million, again, I presume that is without Michigan medicine because they're not paying taxes, property taxes. Is that correct?
So not to get too much in the weeds, but part of that value is the current 2025 value of that land that will become tax exempt. So that 7 million actually drops to about 4 million, and it has to go back up to seven before you can start capturing anything. Very unusual situation, but in the scope of the overall project, it's something that doesn't significantly impair the project.
Right, right. Okay.
But it has nothing to do with, at the end of the year, it has nothing to do with the Michigan property.
Got it. Okay. Second quick question was a reminder, because I didn't see it in the memo. What has been the cost spent on demolition, on the abatement? I know there was asbestos. What is the figure that's been spent on all that, in case we get questions from residents?
How much does it cost?
Yes.
Yeah, so on Table 1 of the plan, there's a chart of the individual categories of costs, and there are three, really, three primary costs. We have asbestos abatement and demolition that, well, we'll start with asbestos abatement was about $2.3 million, and demolition is two different line items, it comes out to about $4.7 million, and then some environmental work, probably a quarter million, and some interest and other costs that are reimbursable gets you up to the $9.2 million, including interest, traditional interest that reimbursement agreements usually have. That's, I hate to say that's it, but it's a fairly narrow group because of the unusual nature of the project and the fact that, at this point, we have a high degree of certainty that that's it. We have a very small contingency for last-minute things that come up during the next couple of months, but unlike most plans, the future at this point is very clear in terms of what it takes to satisfy the Brownfield conditions, and as you've seen, a lot of work is being done currently.
Thank you for walking me through that. I think that is a question residents often, just to be able to understand, there has been a lot of investment put into the property to date, so thank you.
Any additional questions? All right.
Thank you.
I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't see anybody has signed up to speak on this item, but that doesn't prohibit you from speaking. Mary Ellen, would you like to speak? You know that, you're here. All right. You didn't sign up for it, but that's fine. You don't have to. Come forward.
It wasn't working.
Oh, there you go. You have three minutes, same rules. When the light turns yellow, you have one minute left. When it's red, that's your stop time. All right. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight because, I might be confused, but I'm troubled by this whole Brownstown handling with the Somerset West project because it intersects with, to me, with the new bond proposal. Mr. Forbes is up here bragging about how he paid for all this demolition. Are we paying him back? I'm not sure, but if we are, then I don't understand you want us to pay for a library too, but we're giving him taxpayer dollars that could pay for that. And I live right by there, and you redid his driveway to Somerset Mall, which is basically, which is actually a street behind Somerset Collection, and you redid that whole road, and it's just really a driveway for him, and you're talking about funding roads. I want to tell you, nobody wants this library, and I'm off script, so sorry, nobody wants this library more than me. I love that library. My granddaughter goes to that library. My kids grew up, they love reading because of that library. I want a new library. But when I see you fixing Mr. Forbes' personal driveway for Somerset Collection instead of fixing our roads, and you're putting money in the bond for road repair, it makes me wonder how you're prioritizing things. To me, I know you guys know this, and Mr. Forbes, I apologize, but I don't feel he's treated Troy well. I don't feel he does, so to give him taxpayer dollars, it's just my understanding that we reimburse him for those costs, I don't understand this going through because he was up at bragging, got that for a song and dance, he gave half it away, we're not even going to collect taxes on it, he's going to increase traffic on our roads, so it's costing us money too. I understand our businesses will get more, but I don't agree with giving Mr. Forbes anything. He's made a mint off this deal, he's going to continue to make a mint off of this deal. And I really am annoyed that you fixed his driveway instead of the roads when you're putting roads in the bond issue.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Before we can discuss, I need someone to move a resolution so we can have discussion. Someone like to move it? And there are two components to this as printed in the agenda packet. The first component is the termination of the previous Pavilions of Troy Brownfield Plan, and the second part of it is the new one. Councilmember Chanda?
I move item E1, termination of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Five, Pavilion of Troy, parcel 88-20-19-476-002, and number 88-20-19-476-003, 3100 West Big Beaver Road, adoption of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number 12, an associated reimbursement agreement for Forbes Frankel Troy Venture LLC, parcel number 88-20-19-476-004, and parcel number 88-20-19-476-005, 3050 and 3062 West Big Beaver Road, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Chanda, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve E1 termination of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Five, Pavilions of Troy, parcel number 88-20-19-476-002, and number 88-20-19-476-003, 3100 West Big Beaver Road, adoption of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number 12, an associated reimbursement agreement for Forbes Frankel Troy Ventures LLC, parcel number 88-20-19-476-004, and number 88-20-19-476-005, 3050 and 3062 West Big Beaver Road, as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion. Councilmember Hamilton?
Just to clarify how the reimbursement works, it, we're basically, the gain in taxable value to the property that the new property brings about, the taxes they pay on that gain is just going back to them. So none of the reimbursement that they're getting is coming from tax dollars that anyone else is paying. It's just the tax dollars they're paying for the growth of the property is going back to them for the first few years. Then ultimately, when it's worth 125 million, that'll bring into the city about 1.25 million, plus a lot to the schools and all the other taxing units. So that's basically how it works. None of the general fund or other dollars are part of this. This is all just to the value they generate, the taxes they pay just goes back to them to help, you know, bring an economic development and the long-term gain for the city.
Actually, I'm going to touch a little bit on that now, Ms. Berning, because I, obviously, I'm sitting here from a different perspective, and I have a different outlook on this project and our use as a city of the Brownfield Plan that the state allows, but I understand why you're asking your question, and I appreciate that you're asking your question because I think it's one, we get asked questions like, you know, well, wait a minute, you're asking for a bond, but you're spending this money here, and some of that, some of that makes sense, but this particular one, Councilmember Hamilton explained it a little bit about it's, you know, it's not existing tax dollars that are being given back to Mr. Forbes and his development team or his company, but it's on money that currently doesn't exist and theoretically wouldn't exist unless he does his development plan. So there's a little bit of a nuance there that is a strange concept, but I guess I want to touch more on the idea of, it's questions like yours that actually are out there more than we actually hear, so I want to just say thank you for asking the question, for putting it out there, because I'm not sure I have a perfect answer yet, that's going to change your mind necessarily on the spot. I don't think that's going to necessarily make the big difference, but I don't want anyone to think we're afraid of having these questions asked, and the fact that you care and you're here means a lot to our community, and it's one of the reasons our community is successful, I believe. I want to address a little bit, you know, I use the public street behind the Somerset Garage almost daily without going to Somerset. It's a public street, you know? I mean, and we're not fixing Mr. Forbes' driveway. I don't know the reason why that specific road was chosen at which time, but I guarantee it was decided, if it wasn't an emergency situation, I'm sure it was decided before anyone knew this was going to be on the agenda tonight, because that's the way things are planned out over the long term. So I understand the frustration with that, especially from your vantage point of where you live, and you're watching it all, so I get all that, but I don't, I don't want you to believe that we are misusing tax dollars for any private development, because that's not what a Brownfield Plan is, that the state authorizes, first of all, and especially as it relates to our road construction. I mean, there, I'm certain that there's a good reason why that road repair was done at this time. I'm not putting anybody on the spot, but if you look around our city, the major roads that approach our major developments and major revenue generators and economic activity, it's important that we have those roads in great shape. Yes, it benefits Mr. Forbes and his business, but it ultimately benefits the city of Troy for all of our roads to be in good shape. There are other road projects happening throughout our community right now, and there will be road projects that will happen regardless of what happens with the bond in five weeks. That's just a fact. One of our priorities is to make sure our roads and infrastructure are taken care of, so that's always going to be the case. I don't, I don't know, I'm not, I'm explaining more than I'm actually probably helping, but I just, I don't, I don't want you to leave here thinking we did something wrong as a city, when this is a very common and important economic development tool, and a developer will depend on these very specific tools. City of Troy doesn't give abatements, we don't give out money, we're not like other cities that do things very differently. We're very strict with what we're able to do from an economic development standpoint. One of the few things that we can do is governed by the state statute related to the Brownfield Plans. So it was a risk for Mr. Forbes to spend $9 million to clean up a site and tear down a building that has sat there for 18, 19 years. Is he going to benefit from it? 100% he is. And you know what? Good for him. He waited in 18 years to make it happen, and the city of Troy is going to benefit as a result too. So I'm comfortable with this decision related to that because I do recognize the risk he took. He's also going to pay a lot more in taxes too, to the city of Troy. I don't like to talk about that in front of him, but that's a reality of it, you know, and he knows that. That's part of the business decision. So if there's something we can do to encourage the development of a property that has been functionally obsolete, has sat vacant, is full of asbestos, needed a boost, and is a, that's something we can do governed by state statute. a, if that's something we can do governed by state statute, and we have the ability to do it, I'm going to support it, because I do think for the good of the city, it's the right thing to do, even if it's also for the good of Mr. Forbes and his partners. That's the reality. That's the way it works. So again, I'm long-winded, as usual, for me, but I appreciate you asking that question, because I've seen that question pop up online a little bit, or shades of that as it relates to different things, but I'm very comfortable with this being the right thing for the city of Troy, and you may not agree, and I love that you love our library, but it's a, I think this is a, one of the few economic development tools we can use in this city, and I'm happy to be able to use it for this project. So. Councilmember Chamberlain, sorry for that long answer, I just.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will just echo a little bit of what you shared. As soon as I moved to this city in 2016, and I live not far from the Somerset Development, I worked for nine and a half years at the Kresge Foundation. So I looked at the former Kmart literally for years and years, almost a decade. The number one thing I heard before I was on council, and I served on the DDA, I served on other committees, and then when I was on council, is what's happening with Kmart, especially in my neighborhood? Because my neighborhood's always been impacted. And there are folks, actually, someone who lived in my house used to work at Kmart back in the days. And I believe deeply, just as a mayor explained, that this is one of the few economic development tools that we have as a city, and given the outcry that people kept asking, what's going to happen with that property? Is anything ever going to happen? And this, I believe if this did not exist, this Brownfield, this, the opportunity through the tax incremental financing, I don't think there would be an incentive for a developer. And I found on page 64, this, all the eligible activities and costs, it was shared, asbestos abatement, 2.2 million, all of this, for someone who has already put a lot of time and money into that, I don't think they'd be incentivized to do anything. If we didn't have a Brownfield option, I don't know if that property would ever get developed, to be quite frank. And I would rather see it developed, and I have heard by and large with my neighbors and those who live around the city that they would rather see it developed. And I believe it will have public benefit. I see myself walking my dog there, and I know my neighbors well, and I hope to meet up with other kids, with my son, and it'd be a community gathering place. So that's where I'm, I will be supporting it.
Councilmember Chanda.
I wanted to echo the same thing. I mean, if last, I lived in Troy for last 27 years, and last 20 or 17, 19 years, I only hear what's happening with the Kmart development, Kmart area, right? So if as a resident, I was always, you know, can we do something about it? And since I came to the council about the same time when this proposal came up, and I was really excited. If you asked me 10 years ago, is it okay to give a developer $9 million, I'd probably say no. But once I start understanding what Brownfield development means, it is one of the best tools we have to incentivize a developer to build in an area like this, clean up the industry, all the environmental mess we have, asbestos laden, everything, I think it is a pretty fair deal. Yes, Mr. Forbes is going to make money from that, so are we, as a city. We are going to get our taxes. And we are going to get whatever I can calculate now, but we're going to get a lot of taxes that will go to everything else. So, you know, we are a business-friendly city. We cannot not have developments like this. I mean, I'm amazed by the development that we are looking at. Hopefully, everything works out with the developer, you know, with the economic uncertainty, there is always the big if, but, but as a Troy resident and as an elected member, I think it is a fair deal. It is, if you look back and think, instead of him going to cut down a bunch of trees in a green field, develop the same thing, we would be now talking about why are we taking down green, greenfield areas, right? So Brownfield is less, essentially using an area that is essentially a blight in a city like Troy, and incentivizing to build something that is going to be a treasure of our city, I believe it is the right thing to do. We will be getting money for the city in four years since, after it starts developing. So I do support that. I think it is, it is the right thing to do, and I'll be voting yes.
Mayor Protem Gun. I'll just share that if we look at the last 18 years and how much taxes we've received compared to what we will receive, this is definitely going to be a benefit. Plus, we got a U of M hospital on the, on the location, so I think that's a big plus there, too, for all of us people who like going to U of M hospitals.
That's right.
And, and I just found out, and we're almost family.
Any other comments? Councilmember Hoderick.
I think when our economic development director was referencing that this is a win-win, it is. It is a win on both, for both the city and, and the developer, for our residents especially. And I think the bond discussion, I watch it start to cloud and continue, and lead to all sorts of, well, if they're doing this, why this? This has been a part of our picture of what we're looking at as the city moves forward for some time. To say I'm thrilled that this is proceeding and that I got to see it before I finish my time on council is an understatement, not because my name's going to be up on something or anybody will remember I was part of it. I know the value that this is going to bring to me, my home, my investment in the community, all the years I've lived here and paid taxes and been involved here, to have this coming forward and be a part of our community, in a community that's 70 years old, the refreshment that this brings, the reinforcement of the, of the Somerset Collection and all it brings to our community. You know, I've been involved for a long time, and I've had sort of a front row seat of what the collection has meant to our community. There's the obvious, there's been some behind-the-scenes neighborliness that was brought to this city that I will forever be grateful for and had a huge impact on the success of our community, coming together and working together specifically for our library. So it's interesting that you were talking about your passion for the library. There is a through line, and we can talk more later and have a conversation, but I know what a great neighbor the collection has been to this community on multiple levels. The U of M piece and the specialty medicine, Dr. Brooks can help me, I kind of don't know what I'm talking about, but the specialty medicines that are being brought, we had the privilege at the ribbon cutting of hearing from U of M and from the doctors that will be leading those charges. What is being brought to our community was so inspiring and so special, because not only is it being brought to Troy, but because of where we are and the central location here, our neighboring cities, our fellow residents and neighbors all around us having the closer access to these types of specialty medicines, I just, I can't think of anything that's more of a privilege for our community to be a home to. The mayor mentioned that roadway, that is a roadway that is used both for Somerset, the additional office building there, people go through there to get over to Big Beaver. There is an overall roads plan and package when roads are paved. The specific bond dollars and the specific roads that, that are in the bond, those are our key road projects that if the bond passes, they get comprehended in a, in a much more effective way of using our tax dollars versus if the bond were to fail. Those two road projects, my term of it, my layman's terms, is it will be a Band-Aid approach of patchwork of fixing those roads versus the ability for our team with bond dollars, upfront dollars, dollars that don't have to be accrued over the lifetime of millage, to make that capital injection in those two key thoroughfares. That doesn't mean other road projects aren't important and that they won't be going on. It means that we will do it in the most high-quality, most effective way of using our tax dollars on those projects. This decision and a bond vote decision, whether you vote yes or no, and I get where people might be voting no, but, but they're two separate discussions, but where they're related is we're looking at the, the whole of our city and the healthiness of the city overall in terms of its capital, in, in terms of its future, in terms of keeping it fresh and vital going forward. For fam, for folks that are aging here, for folks that are moving in here with kids, we couldn't be doing something better for the community. I saw that the, our employee, or our employee, our resident Brownfield Redevelopment Committee unanimously supported this. And clearly, we're listening to you and entertaining. Are you making a point? You are. I hear you, and I understand why you made it. There's just so many other bazillion other considerations that it's just a wholehearted, easy yes for me to support this, and I want to thank the developer for, it's a business case and a plan there that is so creative, so out of the box in so many ways, and the more familiar I get with it, the more I feel like we are just so privileged to have that on a key corner in our community. And I will be voting yes, because it is a win-win unapologetically. Thank you.
Let me ask a quick question, if that's okay. City Manager Stassi, is there, I see Mr. Bovensie is stood up, is there an opportunity to have an answer about the road specific or something specific related to that?
Yeah. Kurt can answer. If not, then I can get the information back. Do you have it, Kurt?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm sorry, I wasn't jumping up and down and waving yars, but anytime there's opportunity to talk about road funding, I like to. And this in particular, because it shows how responsible we are with the public funds. The particular project behind Somerset is funded by the Local Road Improvement Program, which is put on by Oakland County. So all those funds were earmarked for that project because it has a direct impact to the economy, to the local economy. So that's why around Somerset was chosen. Those are county monies, those are from both RCOC, Oakland County, and some state share tax Act 51 money that, that actually fund that project. So those funds have to be spent in a specific location. We have to justify that it is going to improve the local economy. Obviously, Somerset being such a large part of our local economy, that was an easy sell. Also, the pedestrian crossing that's going to be happening very soon is also funded by federal funds, community development block grant funds. So every opportunity we get to use these grant dollars or, or other revenue sources to improve our roads, we do. So that did not come out of our Act 51 share or our capital fund.
Should have asked you earlier. Sorry. Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Brooks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I will probably echo much of what my colleagues have said. As it was stated, the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan is a program offered by the state of Michigan, and it really provides incentive for developers such as Mr. Forbes to invest in blighted areas, which is something that is a positive. We don't want blighted developments in our city. We want them to be developed into something that is beneficial and the community can benefit from. And I do believe that this specific project is very, very beneficial for our city. As Councilmember Hoderick has said, you know, just the fact that University of Michigan is going to be here. I mean, the University of Michigan is a world-class medical facility, and people travel from all around to be able to receive care from the University of Michigan, and to be able to have that in our backyard is amazing. I believe that we had, we had stated that this was the first University of Michigan facility in Oakland County, was my understanding. So that's really a wonderful thing for us to be able to, to really proudly display to other communities that we have this, and it is really something that we should be proud of and something that we, I am very happy to see personally. And so, you know, as, as Councilmember Hoderick has said, I believe that this is a win-win for our community. Obviously, the road was not our city dollars, it was Oakland County dollars. And so, you know, I think, believe that the benefit of what we are getting from this development far outweighs any potential risk that we have. So, you know, I will be supporting this as well.
Thank you. Chair, Councilor. City Attorney Bloom.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I know that this is probably form over substance, but there are two separate resolutions, and I know earlier I said that you could entertain them both and get the public comment on both of them, but it's probably a good idea to separate them when you're voting on them.
Okay. Do I need to, Councilmember Chanda moved E1, but do we need to amend what's on the table to, or just vote on A and then vote on B?
We can vote on A and then move in second and vote on B.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, so we will, I'll call for the vote on A, which is the termination of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Five, Pavilions of Troy.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gun?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain, that we approve E1B, Approval of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number 12, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain, that we approve E1B, Approval of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number 12. Any discussion, further discussion? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gun?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. That concludes public hearings this evening. You guys can go. I doubt you're sticking around, but you might, Mary Ellen, but the rest of you all go ahead and go. Next up on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see anybody has signed up, so there's no need for a response or reply from council administration. We have no postponed items, so we move on to regular business. I want is board and committee appointments. We do have a mayoral appointment this evening. I'd like to move, resolve that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby appoints the following nominated person to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, Todd Wodzinski, as a resident member for the term expiring June 30th, 2027. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Gun, that we approve the appointment of Todd Wodzinski to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, for the term expiring September 30th, 2027, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gun?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank Mr. Wodzinski for his future service. I actually have a quick question on that. We think we have an LDFA meeting coming up in October.
Yes.
Will somebody ensure that Mr. Wodzinski is sworn in and up to speed? Thank you. Just making sure. I know you would anyway, but. All right, we have no city council appointments this evening, so I, too, is board and committee nominations. I do have two mayoral nominations this evening. I'd like to move the reappointment of, actually, you know what? Strike that. I, I don't, I don't have any appointments or nominations this evening, and my understanding is Mayor Protem Gun has no city council nominations either. So we will move on to I3. There is a request for a closed session. I'll move, resolve that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E, pending litigation, City of Troy versus 4770 Rochester Holdings LLC, and MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve I3, request for closed session, as read into the record and printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gun?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Motion carries. At the conclusion of our public meeting, we will recess here and pick back up in the council boardroom for our closed session, where I expect that we will adjourn for the evening at the conclusion of the closed session. Next up is I4, Standard Purchasing Resolution 5, Approval to Expend Budgeted Funds and Bid Waiver Tiny Mobile Robot, introduced by Dennis Trantham, Deputy Public Works Director. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, tonight is a request for the purchase of a tiny mobile robot to paint athletic fields.
I don't see anybody has signed up, so there's no need for a response or reply from council administration. We have no postponed items, so we move on to regular business. I want is board and committee appointments. We do have a mayoral appointment this evening. I'd like to move, resolve that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby appoints the following nominated person to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, Todd Wodzinski as a resident member for the term expiring June 30th, 2027. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve the appointment of Todd Wodzinski to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, for the term expiring September 30th, 2027, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank Mr. Wodzinski for his future service. I actually have a quick question on that. We think we have an LDFA meeting coming up in October.
Yes.
Will somebody ensure that Mr. Wodzinski is sworn in and up to speed? Thank you. Just making sure. I know you would anyway, but. All right, we have no city council appointments this evening, so I2 is board and committee nominations. I do have two mayoral nominations this evening. I'd like to move the reappointment of, actually, you know what? Strike that. I, I don't, I don't have any appointments or nominations this evening, and my understanding is Mayor Protem Gunn has no city council nominations either. So we will move on to I3. There is a request for a closed session. I'll move, resolve that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E, pending litigation, City of Troy versus 4770 Rochester Holdings LLC, and MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve I3 request for closed session as read into the record and printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes regular business. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
The vote. Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Chanda, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
I just want to point out J5 and J6, these are two major projects we've been talking about for a long time. You have Rochester Road from Barclay to Trinway improvements, the MDOT contract, and you have the TAP program for non-motorized pathways. I was wondering if staff could talk about the timeline of that right now? I know I get a lot of questions, particularly about Rochester Road, about that. I believe in here, it says things are going to get started in November, but I'm just curious, what's that timeline look like? I know some people have said, said it will take two years. I know that probably the significant construction is one year. Like, what should residents' expectation be for that area closing down and, and when the lanes will be open to travel, and then when the sidewalk gaps and all that's going to happen as well? I've seen some work being done on the Square Lake sidewalk already, some of the brush being cut down, but, so I'm curious what the timeline looks like.
All right, I see City Manager Nastasi has requested Mr. Bovensie come forward. Kurt, go ahead.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'll try to capture everything. So currently, the MDOT let it is in process, the, the construction is advertised. So we won't have all the answers until it's actually awarded and we sit down with the contractor and figure it out. Our goal is to have start utility work this November into the winter, start seeing some lane disruption here after the first of the year, see major construction next summer. The project is designed to, once construction starts, to be the actual construction, the impact to the flow of traffic, to be one year. With that, though, in order to achieve that, we will be closing east and westbound Long Lake at Rochester Road down. That's, if we did not do that, then the project would extend to two years. Again, this is all up again for discussion once we award the contract and see if the contractor has a different approach, but that the target, it is designed to be, once we start disrupting the flow of traffic, to be complete in one year. Restoration, of course, the following year. So it is a two and a half, almost three-year project, but the actual disruption to traffic, we're trying to narrow down to one year. As far as the TAP program goes, again, that's up for, once we award, but we're targeting 2026 for the, for the construction of that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Exciting projects. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda, all have been approved this evening. We have no memorandums and future council agenda items to announce this evening, so we move on to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We do have one person signed up this evening. Three minutes apply, Mr. Krent, so I'll call on you to come forward.
Good evening. I'm Tom Krent. I live on Alpine in Troy, and the reason I'm here is to thank you for proposing a very lean and needed bond issue. I appreciate all the work, the hard work you've put in to analyze the financials of it, including our city management. That said, the reason I would like to emphasize to our residents the importance of this is because cities, I've, I've been in, I've, I've been around on this planet for seventy-six years. I've seen, I've always lived in Metro Detroit. I've seen cities rise to pinnacles and then slide backwards. I don't ever want to see that happen in Troy. The type of funding you're, you're providing, or hopefully our voters will approve, is necessary items. It's maintenance, it's both on our infrastructure and facilities. Of course, a big portion of it goes to building a new library. Why do we need a new library? Well, you look at what we've got right now. It's been well said that it's functionally obsolete. Well, it is. And here's another thing. It's, as you know, because I, I was on the Friends of the Troy Public Library for years, that foundation of that building leaks, and it's been leaking for well over twenty years. I remember going down there twenty years ago and seeing puddles. Now, what does that generate? Mold. Now, both books and people do not do well with mold, and to write that building would, you know, actually, if you wanted to save that building, you have to lift that building up, demolish the entire foundation, build a whole new basement and foundation, and then set the building back down on it. Financially stupid. That's why we, we, I just want to emphasize to the public how desperately we need a complete new library that is built to today's building standards. So that said, that's all I've got to say. I encourage our residents to vote yes on the bond issue because it's investing in your future, your investment in your properties that you have in Troy, both business and residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krent. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There is an opportunity for council or administration to respond or reply. Thank you, Mr. Krent, for coming forward this evening. Next up, our council referrals. We have no council referrals submitted, so move on to reports. Does anyone have any comments on any of the reports? All right, we move on to council comments. That's a comment? All right, wow. Nobody signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy.